Okay, we're gonna do, we're gonna call to order. You want to do a roll call, Mauricio?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Joseph?
Here.
Commissioner Saigvason?
Here.
Commissioner Viscaro?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lama?
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Svechny is absent.
Vice Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to say that I was contacted by the mayor before the meeting. She explained to me that she's a delegate in Milwaukee and apologized for not being here for this meeting or the meeting this evening, but that she has full faith in the vice mayor and the commission.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So, should we proceed with the first item, or?
Yes, so the first item on the agenda is a special presentation by our sister city delegation of Punta del Este, Uruguay.
Great.
Good afternoon, everyone. I have the pleasure of having our sister city commission from Punta del Este. They love Sunny Isles Beach and they love our relationship. And they're really here on vacation, however, it was very important for them to come and bring and acknowledge Sunny Isles Beach as their sister city, and they brought a little gift for us. So I'm gonna have Carlos and Monica come up to the stand.
Great, thank you very much.
So, they don't speak very well, English, so I'll translate. Vice Mayor, can you come down?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
Buenas tardes a todos. Es un placer estar acá. Nosotros, como bien dijo Yves, venimos de Punta del Este. Punta del Este is an alcaldía hermanada, ya, con la alcaldía de Sunny Isles. It's a pleasure to have been in the fiesta, in the event of 27 years, 27 years.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven years. University, okay. It's a pleasure to have been there. And really, bueno, venimos from there. We wanted to welcome our alcalde, Javier Carvajal. He also sent a present to the alcalde here. This is also our anniversary, 117 years. It's a glorieta that we have over the sea, which is very important for us, in which it was transformed here for our anniversary. Well, we wanted to leave it and thank them for coming. And we're very pleased that they can go to Punta del Este, which we're going to receive with great pleasure. Muchas gracias, eh? Muchas gracias.
So, yeah, I'll summarize a little bit of what he said. So he said that they come from Punta del Este, Carlos and his wife, Monica. So, I have not known them too long. I met them at our 27th anniversary for the party, but I could tell you that they are very kind people, they're very nice people, and they're very gracious, and I've come to really appreciate them. And they have come here to gift us with this. This is glorieta. I'm sorry, I don't know how you say that in English, but this is something that is there in their, in their city. So this is something that they came to gift us. And I believe Punta del Este has been, not sure how many years, they've been a sister city of ours.
So this is...
So Punta del Este is 117 years old. And como ciudad hermana, ¿cuánto tiempo llevamos? Seven years, something like that, right? Yes, I remember, I remember a little more or less, yes. So they've been a sister city for about seven, eight years, and they're inviting us all to go over there. So that's, that's great, yeah. A big round of applause for that. So, visitar, sí. Ah, okay. And today, and today they're celebrating the Uruguayan independence. The 18th of July is Uruguay Independence Day, so it's great. So it's in July, too, también en julio. I mean, importante. ¿Qué año?
1830.
1830, okay.
Entendido.
Okay, bueno, mil gracias. If you want to come down, then we'll take a picture. Oh, yeah, yeah. Hold on.
Thank you.
The next item is a proclamation presented for Parks and Recreation Month.
Perfect. So, so thank you very much to Parks and Recreation, and obviously we want to recognize you, and I'll read the proclamation here. If I, you know what, read it, I can't, I can't see too well. Yeah.
So you just want to...
The glare. Yeah, if you could read it, please, yeah. I forgot my glasses, yeah.
Whereas, whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of our communities throughout this country, including the city of Sunny Isles Beach. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illness such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education. And whereas Parks and Recreation programming and education activities, such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. Whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to correct, to connect with the nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the city wishes to recognize benefits derived from Parks and Recreation Services. Now, therefore, do I, Larissa Svechny, as mayor, and on behalf of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim the month of July 2024 a Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Sunny Isles Beach.
Thank you very much. That was long, I couldn't have done it, but, so, with this proclamation, I just so wanted to extend my gratitude to our CCS team. Obviously, they're part of this, of what this proclamation reads. So just keep kids active and people outdoors, so, thank you very much.
We have a great team, thank you.
Do you want to say something? Are you gonna say something?
Everybody, everybody.
Okay. Okay, so now we have discussion items. The first discussion item is yours, Commissioner Stuvasan. It's a request for donation of an ambulance to the Jewish Volunteer Ambulance Corps.
Actually, I, yeah, thank you. I had never met with them. I think we all received the same email. I, I sent the email back to Mauricio and told them, like I would say to any other company that wants to do a presentation, that we will honor the request. However, I believe they, we did not let them know, yes, that they were, they had the opportunity to present this item today. So maybe we should defer for another time.
So you want to defer this?
Yeah, clearly, yeah, absolutely.
So for the record, we will be deferring item 3A, discussion item 3A.
And like I said, I neither support or oppose this, it's just like they request to do a presentation in front of the commission. That's it.
Now, I would just like to add, if I can. Alex, is that okay?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. So, for next month, Stan, if this is being deferred for next month, could we also arrange to have someone from Miami Dade Fire to explain whether we have a need for another ambulance, and to explain, you know, the number of calls that they receive on an annual basis, and whether, you know, they need another ambulance, Miami Dade Fire themselves, or we need to even consider a volunteer ambulance from some company?
I think that...
Just for clarification of the whole idea of it.
I think that you need to share with me what the will of the commission is regarding the item and having someone present next month, firstly, and then, secondly, if you would like to have, you're requesting to have Miami Dade Fire rescue here. So I'd like to hear from you all as a group. Because if this is the process, you know, going forward, I would like to have some consensus on who's going to appear at our workshops or meetings going forward, if you're going to request it individually or as a group. Does that make sense?
Yes, so...
Yeah, that, that makes sense. So do we have consensus from the commission?
Well, I believe like any other agenda item, if we put it on time, we can each one bring anything that might be of interest for the community. So I think individually, it's okay, the way, the same way we've been doing it. I don't want to change the, the process again. I think it's working right now, and if you want to invite the fire department, or Alex, me, or anybody else, I don't see why there will be an issue, like you can contact them, or the same way that, like, for example, this company contacts all of us.
Right.
You know, so, and then you can add as one of your, the presentations that you want them to make, if they're willing to do it, clearly, you know, so...
Right, because if we have an item that's being deferred, it's being deferred for when? For next month?
Well, question, do we need a vote on the deferment? Not, we don't need a vote to defer this discussion item, right? It's a workshop, yeah.
When, when would it be deferred to?
Until they want to come, if they want, if they have the interest, you know, they request to be here, yeah.
Since it's, since it's a workshop, it, so you can agree to defer it, but you would just essentially resubmit it as a discussion item when it's, they're available.
Yeah, absolutely.
You don't need, you don't need a date certain.
I just want to chime in. Okay, go ahead. Jerry, just to your point.
Yes.
I, I had questions, because like, you know, I keep saying I need data, data, and part of that data is, is understanding the interface, like how, with, with the fire department. So I reached out and I set up my meeting, I had a Zoom recently, and I was able to ask my questions. And I can tell you from that, that, I mean, if you're looking for a recommendation, do we, do we need, they're not going to answer that, because they're not in, they're not in the position to, they can tell you our, our response time, you know, how many calls, they can give you the information, but that judgment of, do you actually need this, I don't think that they're going to give that to you. They will give you the data, you know, so if that's what you're looking for, I don't think you're going to get it, but you might, depending on your, how your conversation goes, get...
Well, from your discussion, I don't know, you know, what questions you asked, but did you ask whether they themselves need an additional ambulance in our area, or no?
I, I didn't ask that specifically, I was looking for response times, I was looking for the data that would help me make my own assessment. My, I, we can, you can try to schedule somebody to come in, I don't think they would say no, but scheduling can be tricky, but what Fabiola's saying is, if you make your own meeting independently, you have a lot more flexibility. But they've come before, and we can have...
Yeah, they've been here before.
And they, they give us that information in the, in the academy also, we get the report, so, I know they have the data, I don't have it with me here.
What I was trying to bring forward was that if we have these companies come in and give us information, and we don't have full information from, where Sunny Isles is lucky enough to have Miami Dade Fire in our city, if we don't have them here at the same time in order to, for us to understand the full situation when we're trying to make a decision, like last month, we were having one ambulance force down our throats without full information. You can't, how can you do that? So then we go on months and months and months, and we, we just, things linger, and that's what I'm trying to have not happen, is we're trying to make progress on things in the city, not to have to have it go on month after month after month without being decisive on anything. So in that regard, I think when we have a discussion item, if we can have the people come in, whether it's in an afternoon workshop or in the evening, to have those people that can give us full information come in, so that we can make a decision and not kick the bucket down the road anymore.
I understand that, what I'm trying to convey to you is, if, not to have the expectation that these two entities are going to battle it out, they're all, they're not going to battle it out, they're just going to provide you their statistics or whatever.
Yes.
And then it, you know, it'll be up to the commission.
Statistics, or basically, for Miami Dade Fire to say, is, based on the number of calls and our response time and all, do they themselves need another ambulance? Are they lacking an ambulance? If they tell us no, we're, you know, we're in a good shape, and our response time couldn't be any quicker, and having another ambulance service in the city is not going to give anywhere any benefit, except for the city to spend funds that could be, could go somewhere else to benefit residents, then let them say that.
I'll tell you, remembering now, like, one of the things that they said that they're working on, one of the comments was that in a city like Sunny Isles, because remember, they, they're dealing with the whole county, right? But that in the city like Sunny Isles, that's very high traffic and congested, taking out the fire truck sometimes, you know, can, can be challenging, because it's a massive vehicle in a, in a very high-traffic area. So, and despite that, they have good response times, but they're working on, on supplementing that model with...
Yeah, maybe a smaller vehicle.
With the smaller units, I think they, I forget what they call them, like a, a two-person unit or something like that. So they're, they're looking, that, you know, at our challenges, and they are looking to supplement service, but that hasn't been, that's still very much in their discussion process. So I don't know if it'll happen.
But you see, if we don't bring them in, if we don't bring them in and have those discussions, maybe they have some, an idea like that, that was sitting on the back burner, but by our having that discussion with them, maybe it prods them to, you know, promote a smaller vehicle sooner.
All I'm saying is, you can, yes, we can bring them in, but you can also make your own meetings and, you know, because, especially if you have a very lengthy discussion that, that, you know, then makes the meeting longer, but it's up to you how you want to handle that, I'm just telling you how that option...
You know what, from my feeling, there's nothing better than firsthand information, you know? For me to have a discussion with them and then to present it to the commission, it's hearsay. So we, we can't make decisions on hearsay. We have to hear firsthand information and then make rational, you know, decisions that moves the city forward.
Yeah, I, I like to hear from the fire department if you want a presentation, whether it's here during a workshop setting or not, I, I'm willing to, to listen, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm so glad to hear that they're looking to promote a smaller vehicle, maybe that's something that, now that we have that idea, maybe we can get them to, you know, move it ahead more quickly.
Yeah, so, next steps? Do we, Jerry, you want to get in touch with the fire department, talk to Stan about it?
Yeah, who usually sets those up? Is that through your office, Stan?
Yes, that's procedurally how it's supposed to work, which is to my point. So if you're putting things on the agenda, and I'm not aware of it, then I don't coordinate who is here or who is not here. And so, I guess, my question was, I would like to know from the commission first, if you have any interest in adding any additional ambulance or services. If you do, then part of my background would be to also contact Fire Rescue if you, to get information from them. If you don't, if we don't have consensus as a group, then there's no reason for me to bring Fire Rescue in.
Understood.
So that's, those are the discussions I'm trying to figure out.
Well, I, I think this, this ambulance issue, I mean, I think we're still, we're still discussing it, it's still simmering in our, in our minds, and I think, to Jerry's point, I think we need more data. And I think, to my opinion, speaking to the fire department perhaps will be a good first step to understand the needs, service, the speed of service, anything that they are lacking, etc., any future plans for improvement, etc., so, yeah, I, I like to listen to them, I don't know if my fellow commissioners have the same feeling.
Okay, so, as a group, would there be consensus for me to ask Fire Rescue to attend our next workshop, to give us just an overview of services that they're providing?
For me, it's a yes. Yes, and I would say yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and also for the last, last month, we had a proposal regarding an ambulance corps. This month, we had one that, you know, they just weren't notified, but possibly then, next month, Fabiola, you can contact these people, and they can also...
I will send them an email, that's true.
Yes, yeah, to have them also show up.
They want to be here, that we are providing...
Right, exactly. Because also, we need to know if we're going to have an additional service, we need to know what their connection is with Miami Dade Fire right now. It could be that we're looking to get an ambulance from a service that's not in coordination with Miami Dade Fire.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we have consensus, we know next steps. Next item, item 3B?
Yes.
That's a discussion regarding an ordinance requiring remediation of swell areas. That's you, Mr. Jerry Joseph?
Yes, so I had brought this issue up previously regarding swell areas, particularly, I know of in Golden Shores, but I'm sure in Point Sienna, Atlantic Isle, and even in areas on Collins Avenue, where the condos have swell areas and property, in, in order to alleviate flooding, there is ground that is not, doesn't have, and you can see after a heavy rain where there are puddles and the soil is not, doesn't have the absorption you would think. And the reason being that, at one time or another, there was gravel laid down that was not dug out, and at the time that I previously made this request for an ordinance, it was, the end result was that we were stamping on future plans for development that, at, before a CO, the developer would be pulling out the gravel. So I don't know for myself whether that language is actually being stamped on all plans, yes? Okay. Or whether it's being followed through on, but then in that regard as well, we have properties that were built prior to that language being stamped on plans, which needs to be dealt with, because after any rain at all, we drive around and we see that we have mosquito havens on properties where we have that gravel in the ground, and sod was just put right on top of it. So I'm asking that we have some type of ordinance that we can go to those homeowners and say, "Look, you have this situation, you know, that needs to be remedied. It's not a big job to do, but it certainly aids in the need to have to spray for mosquitoes and all. If this water was being absorbed, there wouldn't be mosquito larvae developing in this area." And that's what I'm asking for at this point, to go back and, rather than, along with the language being stamped on future plans, to be able to go to homeowners or any condo owners where we see sitting water, and let them know that, that ground needs to be dug out and replaced with up to four feet of clean fill.
It's up for you all for discussion. We, we currently have an ordinance regarding standing water. We don't have any ordinance and a requirement that there be a remediation and the removal of up to four feet of fill. In my general discussions with the city engineer, something like that could have the potential to affect water lines or electric lines or some things like that. So we'd like to look at it a little bit further, look at our existing ordinance, and see if perhaps it can be strengthened or revised to meet some of these requirements. And additionally, just note that any changes you make to your code would be prospective, not remedial. So those are existing non-conforming uses, so you couldn't go back and force somebody to change their swell, but any changes applied for or any prospective development, you could apply an ordinance to.
So I have a question. So at this point, when somebody's building a new house, right, and they allow, they lay down the gravel, and then they pour cement on top of that, have we, because I, I think I saw Clay nod, and I'm not sure, did we revise our, our building code or ordinance to, for, for that builder or that future homeowner to remove the gravel before? So nothing, so that has not taken place?
We have, we have implemented a stamp on the plans that speaks to that, and we have also implemented where our city engineer does a final inspection to ensure that any type of drainage is met and proper according to the plan. So that is in place currently. If this water was being absorbed, there wouldn't be mosquito larvae developing in this area. And that's what I'm asking for at this point, to go back and rather than along with the language being stamped on future plans, to be able to go to homeowners or any condo owners where we see sitting water and let them know that that ground needs to be dug out and replaced with up to four feet of clean fill.
Look for you all for discussion. We we currently have an ordinance regarding standing water. We don't have any ordinance ordinance and a requirement that there be a remediation and the removal of up to four feet of fill. In my general discussions with the city engineer, something like that could have the potential to affect water lines or electric lines or some things like that. So we'd like to look at it a little bit further, look at our existing ordinance and see if perhaps it can be strengthened or revised to meet some of these requirements.
And additionally, just note that any changes you make to your code would be prospective, not remedial. So those are existing nonconforming uses. So you couldn't go back and force somebody to change their swell, but any changes applied for or any prospective development, you could apply an ordinance to.
So I have a question. So at this point, when somebody's building the new house, right, and they lay they lay down the gravel and then they pour cement on top of that, have we, because I I think I saw Clay nod, and I'm not sure, did we revise our our building code or ordinance to for for that builder or that future homeowner to remove the gravel before? So nothing, so that has not taken place?
We have, we have implemented a stamp on the plans that speaks to that, and we have also implemented where our city engineer does a final inspection to ensure that any type of drainage is met and proper according to the plan. So that is in place currently.
Yeah, mm-hmm, okay, all right.
But that, if I can say, that, you know, that issue gets overlooked a lot. If if the homeowner puts down sod and then they have a CO, you know, an inspection for a CO, the inspector never knows what's under the sod. So if we have an ordinance regarding the requirement to dig out the gravel, which we don't really have right now, I think that would be helpful. And also regarding our 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 code with with regarding standing water, I think if we see standing water, we know what the issue is, that that gravel has not been removed. So even if you don't go down, and I don't know myself regarding the utilities, how far down they put their pipes and all, but I think even if you were to put two feet of clean fill, which I think is, if I can ask, anyone in the audience happen to know how far down typical utilities are laid underground? Clay?
It don't. It would, oh, we can go back and research it. We don't, we don't ask questions from people of the audience.
I'm sorry, okay. So, yeah, so I had thrown in four feet just to have it be the most effective as far as absorption, but according to how many feet the utilities are, we could adjust the the amount of fill to have it still have an ordinance go through without having that be the reason that we don't enact an ordinance at all.
Okay, we can certainly look at it.
All right, thank you. Okay, next item, item three C, discussion regarding revisions to section 201 dash five fireworks, and that is you, Jerry, again?
Yes, okay. So I noticed prior to the Fourth of July, the city put out a notice saying that fireworks were not allowed on the beach, in parks, but they didn't mention anything regarding neighborhoods. So are fireworks allowed in the neighborhoods and just not in the beach, on the beach and in the parks?
That's correct. So there's been a moratorium, a state moratorium on the ability of local government to actually enact laws regarding fireworks. It is fireworks are only permitted three times a year under state statute, which is New Year's, New Year's Day, and Fourth of July. Otherwise, they're banned. Miami Dade County also bans those. And with regards to the beach, being that it's Miami Miami Dade's beach, they also have regulations in place with regards to that. But on those three holidays, they would be allowed to set them off in the neighborhoods.
Okay, so anyone can set off fireworks in their backyard and have a party and have fireworks?
Yeah, and there's a there's a variety of, and it depends. There's, there's, we don't, I don't believe we have any retailers in the city of the of for fireworks, but there's also, it gets very convoluted as to them being able to get the fireworks. I think a lot of places, there's only legal fireworks are only for agricultural purposes, but I from anecdotally, what I understand is for you to get your hands on those types of fireworks, you sign some paperwork that says it's for agricultural purposes and then nobody questions it. So, but the state has allowed the use of such fireworks on those three days. Aside from that, they're they're not, they're prohibited.
Okay, and cities are not allowed to enact any ordinances regarding neighborhood fireworks?
Correct. But the only caveat to that, I would say, like with our public parks, not so much as a regulatory body, but that's our property, right? So that's our land. So let's say the beach, we own the beach, then if we owned the beach, we could do it under that ownership hat versus regulatory hat. Same with our parks. So I think you're fine with with prohibiting them in your parks. It's just that in the neighborhoods and individual uses, the state kind of takes over.
All right, so I'll just have to get my dog's headphones.
Yeah.
Alan, does does our ordinance distinguish between residential, like a a Golden Shores like versus the North Bay Road where Margolis is? I mean, can people just set off fireworks on the North Bay Road?
The fireworks section, it's basically a park rule that's codified in section 201 dash five, and it makes, if I can find it, the exact area, no person may bring into or have in his possession or set off or otherwise cause to explode, discharge, or burn in any park area or any public lands or highways adjacent there to. Any firecrackers, torpedoes, rockets, toy firearms, cannons, blah, 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 blah. Fireworks or explosives of inflammable material or any substance or compounds that may explode, discharge, or burn unless first obtaining written permission from the department director. So it's it's actually a park rule essentially in that section of the code, so that's the only language pertaining to it.
Yeah, I don't feel you're answering my question. North Bay Road, can people come out of their condos and set off fireworks in the middle of North Bay Road on the Fourth of July?
Yes.
They can? Okay.
Now, if there's, you know, there's safe discharge and unsafe discharge. Obviously, if you're discharging it and shooting it towards another building, that's.
Well, that's the problem, right? This is very dense.
It is, but you can't.
This is a very dense.
You can't outright prohibit them, but certainly if law enforcement or or anyone else reports it, I even though I can set off a firework on New Year's Day, on New Year's Eve, doesn't mean that I could shoot it towards Stan, right? I can't point it towards Stan and shoot it towards him or inside a house or those rules are still in place.
Maybe this needs some some looking into because I don't see how in a narrow, dense, densely populated area with with a narrow road, I don't see how there's a a safe way to set off anything, right, in any direction. You know what I'm saying?
But we're, I know, but the state, it's all state regulated.
Well, some legislative advocacy there.
And I mean, there've been efforts for years of for cities to try to outright ban them because of the issues you raised with pets and with veterans and things of that sort. But that's fallen on deaf ears in in Tallahassee, so.
All right, I'm glad we had clarification.
But certainly, you know, anybody that's seen dangerously setting off fireworks, that's that's something different.
That's subjective, right, and and I mean.
Well, it is, but sometimes it's not.
Yeah, no, sometimes it's obvious, but I think in 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 an environment like ours, right, this is the issue, these laws are made with some concept and that nobody thinks about a city like ours. We're we're not like most cities. And I I don't think that this law adequately addresses our concerns.
No, I.
But I, you know, I understand it's not for for you to fix or for us to fix, but that's good to know. I thought you couldn't.
Yeah.
I thought you couldn't do it on the road.
Well, you can't do it on the, I mean, when you say North Bay Road, I mean, again, it can't be on the road, it can't be, you know, that type of thing.
Well, I'm talking about the street.
Right, no, the street itself, no.
Okay.
So that's, but that's a different set of laws. That's you can't, just like discharging firearms, you know, it's not all in one section. You can't go in the middle of the road and discharge.
That's where people do it, though. Like, if you go in a residential area, they're not doing it in their yards.
And it depends what.
They don't want to set their gardens on fire, so they do it on the pavement.
And it depends whose road it is, it depends.
Okay, so, but that's my question. North Bay Road.
Right.
Is a main road, it's a city road.
Right.
It's pavement, so you're telling me no.
No, because they're they're technically obstructing the roadway.
Okay, so then.
But that's not, has nothing to do with fireworks in the sense.
I don't care where the law comes from, as long as it addresses our needs. So it's not because it's dangerous or not dangerous, it's because you're obstructing the road.
Right.
I'm good with that. I'm good with that.
But again, just to, on the enforcement side, it gets very tricky because there's a great picture of Los Angeles after they banned fireworks, and you see all the fireworks everywhere. And you don't have a large enough law enforcement force to go to every street. And that's where the challenge really comes in is even having it on the books, it's so hard to regulate because they're just going off everywhere.
Commissioner, could you turn on your microphone, please? Yeah, I had people writing to me on the Fourth of July that the beach is inundated with alcohol and fireworks and, you know, the the enforcement is difficult, especially, you know, the vehicles, they go on the sand and then they sink in and get stuck and, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Next item, item three D, discussion regarding additional speed bumps in Golden Shores. Commissioner Joseph?
Okay, so I had the opportunity to take a drive-through with Stan, our city manager, in Golden Shores. We have, I believe, what was it, fifteen speed humps that were installed, but in a haphazard manner, which no one can rationalize, and we need a lot more. And this ride-through was at least, what, two months ago now? And we've had no action whatsoever, so I had to bring it up again because we have, actually, there are areas where we have a speedway in Golden Shores that needs to be addressed and it's not happening. So I need to take it further and see what can happen.
Well, a couple of things after our review, I've sat down with a city engineer and we've looked at the area as a whole. The first thing to note is that this is a county road, so anything that we do there.
All of Golden Shores is a county road?
Requires county approval, yes. And so that's the first challenge with adding additional speed tables, speed humps, speed bumps. The second thing to consider that we're reviewing is the effect of adding additional speed tables on emergency response. So there's a lot of factors to consider before we go in and start adding additional speed humps or bumps throughout the area. So we have to look at the challenge of our emergency response, and I have the city attorney, the city engineers doing some additional research to see what the average, I would say, decline in response time would be per speed table that we add, because every second counts in an emergency. So we're trying to figure out that formula. And then the last thing we're trying to determine is, we want to do a speed study to see if there's areas throughout Golden Shores where there's actually speeding that we could deter through either additional enforcement prior to the installation of speed tables. The other thing to consider is there are specific processes and means when you're adding in a speed table in terms of location where it could be potentially too close to a stop sign. So it decreases its ability to bring about the required action. Or the other issue and the challenge is installing a speed table or speed hump where someone's ingress or egress is for their property. Some people do not want it at their driveway. So those are the various factors that we have to review in this. It's not a matter of us being able to go out and just add some, you know, speed tables throughout the area.
So, okay, so the fifteen that were added originally, how were those, the location of those determined?
Rick, do you want to come up and speak to some of that, please?
And you were gracious enough to be along with us on that ride-through.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know if this is on, but the location of the of the speed tables that were there were basically the same locations we had them previously that our engineer took to Miami Dade and got reapproved. So they're they're where they were before. So that, so we just replaced them as part of the undergrounding project and paving project. The ones that didn't get put in were because Miami Dade felt they weren't warranted there due to driveway connection points or location within the block.
Okay.
So those are the ones we can revisit.
Right, so you saw when we did the drive-through that you have from 189th Street all the way up on 186th to Collins, it's a speedway there with not one speed hump.
Correct.
Which is, yeah, almost at least three quarters of a mile without a speed hump, straight run and cars speed there all the time.
That we can determine.
Okay, and then there's not one speed hump on Atlantic at all, that people.
They are, they're they're in the 189 area, but they didn't put the ones, I believe there was one south of there should have been replaced also down around 186.
Right, but there's nothing there.
No.
And this is the street that people use for the pass-through when there's traffic on Collins. So if we had more speed humps there, it would deter them from doing that. And it's also a safety problem because we have a lot of kids on scooters on Atlantic and the speed humps, even though they have to be careful and they should wear their helmets, but they don't, the cars, it's it slows down the cars from flying through.
Correct, that's the purpose of speed tables.
Right, yes, but they're not there. So I'm requesting that we have ones installed, even temporary ones. I have neighbors calling me every day.
We can't do temporary speed humps.
Excuse me?
We can't do a temporary speed hump.
We had screwed in ones previously.
They are not permitted.
Oh, they're not.
They're in violation of Miami Dade code and we can't put those back.
Okay, so all that time we were in violation?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so then the the permanent ones, then, let's.
And that's the process we would look at.
Okay, so is it in process or not now?
Yes.
So how many do we have in process?
Well, it's under review, and like I said, one of the things to consider is also the effect it may have on emergency response vehicles. And then, once we finish our review, we would bring it back to the commission where the commission would give us the direction to add additional speed tables, if that's what you all agree.
So how long might that be?
It's undetermined because we'd have to go through Miami Dade County, so.
Okay, but it hasn't been submitted to Miami Dade, so how long before it goes to Miami Dade?
We're still reviewing the data.
We couldn't give you a timeline on that.
So it could be never?
No.
Okay.
It won't be never. There's a lot of elements that have to be put together. I'm not exactly sure how each of those are gonna, how much each of those may take once we start getting into them more.
So there's no time frame at all?
So it could be, it could be within the end of the month.
Okay.
Could be, you know, middle of August.
Okay.
But, you know, I mean, it's not six months down the road.
Right, okay, so I should continue to ask then?
To make, to make initial submittals.
Right, okay.
Right. The final answer is, I can't give you that date until we get into it.
Right, okay, so I'll just continue to pursue it. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Rick.
Thank you. The only comment I have about that is that I I've noticed that depending on the type of speed bump, if it's not sizable enough or raised enough, that some drivers are crazy enough to just speed through them. So I I would just give that, you know, observation. I believe we have replaced, we had some smaller ones along 172nd and North Bay Road on the south side, and I think the north side too, and those are better now. But just that observation, I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, during our meetings, I wanted to explain that it was a good point that was brought to me by Rick, which is the effect on the possibility of response times for emergency vehicles coming in. So yes, it may decrease speeders, but we also have to consider, you know, potential, the effect it would have on.
And that's a good point, yeah.
So so that's why we're looking at it as a group, and then we'll bring it back to you all for determination.
And there's also, having dealt with this issue before, there's also regulations as to how they're done, the grade, the height, so because you pitch it too high, you're going to damage a lot of transmissions, right? So there's a lot of standards by which, you know, the city engineer and others have to follow. Sometimes they seem ineffective, but we don't have much of a choice on on how to grade them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And the other comments before we adjourn? I think we're done.
What, what is this?
That's for this evening.
Oh, so, okay.
This for this evening, okay. Yeah, I was not given any instruction on this.
Has this been added already, or are we adding?
No, we're we're going to have a discussion whether to add it for tonight.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
But I was told that we have to bring that up at 6:30. But I was told that we have to bring that up at 6:30.
Okay, all right. Would that be, go ahead, Jennifer, sorry.
No, I, no, I just wasn't sure on the process because this is like a, since we split the meetings, I don't know.
Yeah, I didn't mention it because I was not given any instruction on this and I thought it was, it was going to be for 6:30 since it says resolution, so...
So just to, if I may, Vice Mayor, just to clarify, because that's an actionable item and being that we are on a workshop, that has to wait until 6:30 o'clock. So that'll be part of the order of business portion of that meeting.
Yeah, that's what I thought because it says this resolution is presented, so I thought it was going to be for 6:30.
So at 6:30, we vote whether you're going to allow it to be added on?
Exactly.
Okay, all right, perfect, okay.
All right, sorry.
All right, well, call to adjourn?
All right.
The here motion, yeah?
There's no motion?
Yeah, oh yeah, no motion, yeah, thanks.
Thank you.